Recording in progress.
All right, going to call to order the Wednesday, September 10th, 2025 Chaska Planning Commission meeting. With that, Liz, we take a roll.
Yes, Commissioner Austin.
Here.
Baswa.
Here.
Campbell.
Kerber.
Here.
Purdy.
Here.
Rostud. Saylor.
Here.
Urbanski.
Here.
And Chairperson Brass.
Here. Next, we'll go to adopt the agenda. I'll make a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Urbanski, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Go on to Article Four, visitor presentation. This would be for anyone that would like to address the commission for any item that is not on the agenda tonight. See, we have a big crowd out here. Is there anybody out there that wants to talk that's not on the agenda? Assuming that's, oh, assuming we're going to be good there. I'm going to move on to approve the previous meeting minutes. Everyone reviewed those?
Correct.
Make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Okay.
Baswa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Then we have consent items, six A and six B. And Liz, remind me, we do these separately, correct, or can we do them all at once?
For consent, you can just do one motion.
Okay, we'll do one motion. But first, before we do that, is there any final questions for the city on six A or six B, the final site and building plan for Pope Design Group, and then the comprehensive plan for development, redevelopment of the city, the Tiff District? Okay, so with that, I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Second. Austin, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. We'll move right into Action Item 7A, public hearing, and recommend approval of the preliminary site and building plan for zoning ordinance amendment and an easement vacation for Auto Pros. Liz?
Can you guys see my shared screen up there?
Yes.
Got it.
Thank you. All right, we have a preliminary site and building plan, a zoning ordinance amendment, and an easement vacation being requested this evening for the company known as Auto Pros that are located at the address of both known as 1601 and 1603 Old Audubon Road. This is being proposed by Ryler LLC and Auto Pros. So the site in question is on this aerial exhibit. The site is located within what we would know as our southeastern portion of the city. It's located just to the east of Old Audubon Road, south of Engler Boulevard, which is not shown on this aerial here, west of Audubon Road, and west of the East Creek Diversion Channel and Trail that runs along that. There are industrial sites that surround the property, both on the north and west sides. We do have some residential that about more of the south end of the site. So the site in question, there is an existing building, which is in the lighter color blue, at 1601-1603 Old Audubon Road, which is where Auto Pros sits today. And then the other site in question is the parcel just immediately south of Auto Pros, which is currently owned by the city. So to go over our normal three-step process, looking at land use applications that come through, we typically have three steps that review the project itself that are independent from each other. We are at the second or preliminary step in this three-step process. The concept plan was not warranted for this project because there were previous approvals completed in 1997 that showed a 2,700 square foot future building on the site. So the scale of the building addition being proposed this evening fell very similar to those previous approvals. So that is why we are at the preliminary step in this application or review process. So to go over a little bit about the business and some of those previous approvals, Auto Pros has been in operation for around 45 years. They do specialize in auto repair. They currently have nine team members at their Chaska location, which use five service bays within that building. They are looking to expand their business. They have been quite fortunate to be able to expand outside of their means. So they are hoping to add on to the existing building and bring in more service bays within their operation, which would ultimately bring in about seven to eight new jobs for the building itself. 1997 was when the site plan, site and building plan and plat were approved for the lot in question, or the lots in question this evening. This included the 3,700, or 3,700 square foot building that's out there today, and then the plat of the channel addition that the lots were a part of as well. And this exhibit shows the existing building in the yellow-orange color, and then the future building that was contemplated on the southern lot as well. So we'll be referencing two separate lots during kind of the analysis of this. Lot three, block one, is the existing site of Auto Pros today. And then Lot four, block one, is the lot south of Lot three or Auto Pros today. And both of those are in question with the overall project. In April of 1997, the property was also rezoned to a planned industrial district, PID5, to be exact. And when these properties were platted, at the time, the city did acquire these parcels from the flood control project that happened earlier or before this plat. So the city owned it with the intention of selling them off to end users. So in 1997, there was an end user for Lot three, which was West Suburban Towing. So the city sold off Lot three to them so that they could construct their over 3,000 square foot building, and then retained Lot four because there was no end user identified at that time. But the intention, again, was to sell off those lots to end users. In July of this year, City Council did approve a letter of intent with Auto Pros to sell off Lot four to help facilitate their expansion. In terms of what's existing out there, again, like I said, there's two lots that were a part of the channel addition. Lot four is the southern triangular lot, and is comprised of 0.47 acres. Lot three is 0.56 acres and contains the existing Auto Pros building, which is 3,700 square feet in size, and has five service bays and 19 parking stalls on site. It also has two access points that come off of Old Audubon Road, both on the north side of the building and on the south side. The north one will remain in its current state. The south one will be relocated more south. There are some major utilities that exist over the properties. There is a large sewer pipe that exists on the west side of the property. That's 36 inches. It also has a 25-foot drainage and utility easement over it, and this will come back up in question in some subsequent slides here. There's also a Chaska transmission line that, or overhead power line that exists on the south side between kind of the midpoint of Lot four. That's shown in purple here on this exhibit. There is no easement over that today because it's going through city-owned property. So another item that will come up for discussion later on. And then there's also a drainage and utility easement that extends across the joint boundary of Lots three and four, which is pretty typical of any boundary line on a plat, as there will be a five-foot drainage and utility easement on either side of that. It's pretty standard, unless there's major utilities, then sometimes those easements are wider. The zoning, again, for the property is a PID5 district. These are just some existing images of the property, looking mainly from Old Audubon Road on the north side, as well as the south side, and then showing the existing tree cover on this bottom-left image, and existing overhead power line that bifurcates Lot four. And then the lower-right image is the backside of the Auto Pros building with their five bays. So the current request has three different components to it. One is a preliminary site and building plan for a one-story building addition totaling approximately 3,000 square feet, as well as a parking expansion to the parking lot. It also includes a zoning ordinance amendment to PID5 regarding the setback for parking on Lot four. And then lastly, an easement vacation to vacate the 10-foot drainage and utility easement on the joint property line of Lots three and four. So the preliminary site plan is shown on this screen here. The building addition is shown in red, and then where that relates to the existing property line between Lots three and four. Lot four, again, is in the process of being acquired by Auto Pros and has kind of a parallel path for them to purchase the property in conjunction with getting their planning approvals. And that ultimately will be consolidated into their Lot three of their existing lot. So the building addition will total approximately 3,000 square feet in size. It basically will be flush with the existing width of the building and then extend south into that Lot four. This building addition will add four more service bays to their operation, plus add a new customer service lobby that will face their eastern facade or elevation. The parking expansion will bring their parking stall count to 25 stalls, which will be above what the city would require for parking for this type of use, but will be adequate to serve the needs of the facility. If you've been out there today, they do need the parking out there, so having additional stalls for the property is a good thing. The northern access point, again, will remain. The southern access point will be pushed south to line up with Arbor Drive. That's immediately west of the property. And again, that will provide full circulation around the building out to Old Audubon Road. The site plan is showing the, where the pinch point is, and I'll get more into detail with that in a different slide here. But effectively, all of the setbacks are being met with this proposed site plan. The only one in question this evening, which is zoning ordinance amendment, is being requested for, is the parking setback on the eastern property line, which is shown at roughly zero feet off that property line. So we'll get into that a little bit later. This is the landscape plan. With this being a property adjacent to a regional trail that runs along the East Creek Diversion Channel, screening has been an important item of thought for the site plan. So ensuring that the eastern edge is appropriately treated with screening with landscaping is important. The, with the parking lot expansion and the alterations being done there, it effectively takes out the existing landscaping that's there, and they're proposing all-new along that eastern property line. So there will be new plantings in place on the northern half of the site, on the east side there, as well as some plantings are shown on the southern half, too. There are a few pieces for the site plan to look at in terms of enhancements into their final site and building plan submittal, just to ensure that screening is adequately supplied. And those are placed as conditions of approval as a part of the preliminary site and building plan. There's conditions on Lot four, kind of the southern half, within the area south of the parking lot, to add additional coniferous trees within that area outside of the overhead power line easement that's planned, and then trying to fill in some additional screening in between the proposed plantings on the north side of Lot three on that eastern edge, or incorporating more coniferous plantings, just to provide that all-year-round screening between the property and the trail. The building is made out of a colored concrete block today. The building addition will essentially match the same building materials and look of the building. With building additions and how our ordinance would apply, is the building addition essentially should match the existing building in terms of material and overall design. And that is what they're planning to do. Getting into the zoning ordinance amendment of this request, again, this is an amendment to the existing zoning out there, which is PID5. It's specifically requesting a revision from the parking setback that is applied to the lots within PID5. So the changes would basically show the parking setbacks for lots one through three, which are the existing Auto Pros lot, and then the lots immediately north of that, and then setbacks defined for Lot four, block one, which is the triangular lot to the south. And the only change there would be a zero-foot setback for parking from the east property line, and basically matching up with what the site plan is showing in their submittal. Getting into the analysis of that and reasonableness of the request, we're looking at a multitude of things in terms of the conditions of the property and limitations. So providing that change for Lot four, the size and shape of the lot is challenging due to it being triangular in size, so it starts to taper down as you go south, and the buildability of it starts to go down as well. The sewer pipe on the west side, again, is 36 inches, so it's a significant pipe that the city owns and maintains. The easement area over it, again, as we mentioned, is only 25 feet. However, in order to capture the maintenance corridor that's required for the size of a pipe, would essentially require a 40-foot easement over that sewer pipe. So effectively, the 40 feet is the front setback from the west property line to the building. The PID5 district only requires a 30-foot setback, so there's 10-foot of loss due to that easement expansion needed. Building addition and other portions of the site meet all the other required setbacks. And with the building being pushed back 40 feet, it basically squeezes the area between the building and that eastern property line on Lot four, and creates a pinch point there. So, again, the zoning ordinance that's being requested only applies to that pinch point area. And as staff going through the analysis, we feel that the zero-foot parking setback applied on that eastern half for Lot four is a fair trade-off for the expanded sewer easement that we're requesting to get over our sewer pipe. The third and final component of this request is the easement vacation. The applicant is requesting to vacate the easement that runs along the property line, or joint property line, of Lots three and four, which is a 10-foot drainage and utility easement. We have looked at that in more depth with city staff and have determined that there are no utilities that run underneath that easement. There is no need from a drainage conveyance perspective, and we will be capturing larger easements over the existing utilities there. So the request to vacate that easement is reasonable. So just a few things that the applicant will need to work on for their final site and building plan is continued coordination with the Army Corps of Engineers on any site work that would be proposed within the East Creek Diversion Channel. Although it is owned by the city, that infrastructure is regulated by Army Corps of Engineers. So if there is grading work proposed within that area, they'll have to get review and approval completed by that agency. Another piece is completing and getting approved their wetland plan for the property, which is actively underway, and then working on the screening and plantings for the overall site. So in conclusion, we're asking two motions this evening. One would be to recommend approval of the preliminary site and building plan, and the easement vacation for Auto Pros at 1601 and 1603 Old Audubon Road, and then based on the conditions that are listed within the staff report, and then a motion to recommend approval of the zoning ordinance amendment to PID5 based on the draft ordinance and how we laid it out in a former slide. If this moves forward this evening, they would be going to City Council on Monday, September 15th, so that would be this following Monday. Happy to answer any questions. We do have the applicant in the audience, too, if you have any specific questions for them.
Thank you, Liz. It is a public hearing, so in a moment, we'll open it up to the public if anyone, anyone would like to address the commission. First, we'll just discuss amongst ourselves, any questions. I'll just start off, just to, just to verify and reiterate, the zoning ordinance amendment, that is, the way it's crafted is it's, it's not going to apply to every property in the PID5. It'll be just this at the pinch point. So we've crafted it in such a nature that it's very specific.
Correct.
Just for clarity for everybody, so it's not going to, you know, create problems in the future. And then, again, just kind of based on that, the zero setback, the main driver is that 40-foot easement need, and then the pinching of the, of the property going in a triangular fashion.
Right.
Okay. Looks like we're good on parking. You guys have any questions?
What's going to happen with the power line that crosses the site?
That'll stay in place.
Okay. So that's crossing over the parking lot or the green space area?
No, it'll be south of the parking lot.
So it's over green space?
Yep.
They kind of stop right before it eagles down, right?
I can, if I need to, I can go back to a previous slide.
I think after the parking spaces.
And stay south of the building.
Yep.
Great.
They didn't mark it up in the site plan, but the line is basically right there.
Right there, yeah.
Are you sure?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know if I, if I look at that lot, Lot four specifically, I don't think it's a buildable lot for anybody else. I don't think you can put another building. It's an extension.
I would agree.
Pretty much what you can do with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else? Questions for City? Okay, so at 7:25, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone would like to address the commission? If we have any questions for the applicant, we can ask him to come up? No? Anybody?
Well, waiting for questions, but I'll.
Pretty straight there.
Welcome. I'm Peter Hildar, Ryler LLC, 14 Pheasant Lane in North Oaks. Been working in Chaska for a long time, actually. It's been quite a few years since I've been here. Anyway, this is a really, really tough site.
Yeah.
And what Elizabeth didn't tell you is what's actually below the ground, which is really, really, really tough site. Bad soils, I think we put that in our narrative, is a further challenge on this site. Auto Pros is quite, quite needy of the additional bays in order for their success. So I think that this is a good compromise. A couple of sort of points I do want to point out, too, is the driveway that comes out of our new parking arrangement, it actually lines up with the street, which it doesn't currently, but that actually is also a sort of a.
It's a benefit.
It is a benefit.
Urban improvement, if I would call it that.
For sure.
The other thing I wanted to mention is that we've already initiated a wetland review by the Army Corps of Engineers. That, you know, takes a little while. But we've already come up with a contingency plan, so if, for some reason, it becomes too onerous to work with the Army Corps for a couple of feet of soil in that area to just balance out the grade, it's not major at all. It would simply mean that along that curb line, we'd have a short retaining wall, three feet or less. So that's, that's why we're asking for that little carve-out on the site, is just for, to get that grade sort of leveling right up into the slope. The third issue is the driveway on the north side. I think one of the conditions by staff was that we would work with the current owner of the building to the north to have a, actually memorialize that with a access easement between our two properties, because the driveway is sort of shared by both properties.
Yeah, is it just a handshake now? Basically, just a handshake right now?
Yeah, fist bump, whatever.
Who maintains it?
That is a really good question, because it doesn't look like it has had significant maintenance for quite a long time.
Yeah, I agree with City. That would be, it'd be in the best interest of both owners to memorialize it.
However, if, for some reason, the owner to the north decides that they don't want that, which I'd be surprised, because it's their only access.
Right.
We do have the access to the south, and we can operate with one.
Sure.
So I think that all of the sort of conditions of approval are all surmountable. And the whole reason why we have to go through this process is we needed to make sure we could buy the property, you know, that we'd have a firm purchase agreement in order to proceed with the development. And so that's what this process sort of culminates right now, is our ability to anchor in on that purchase agreement and get her done.
Yeah.
So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
You mentioned it was bad soil.
Yes.
It's not contaminated, right?
No, it's not contaminated. It's just, you know.
Clay, just.
Not clay. I wish it were clay.
It's the same that we ran into on some previous stuff.
Poor soils. I think the original building, nobody seems to recall, but I think the original building was probably put on piles. And so this building. And so this building will also be put on piles.
That's poor soils in that area.
Yeah.
Some other stuff that's come through here, we've run across that.
Seems like a lot of really good problem solving from you all and from city staff. Kind of seems like a win-win for everybody involved, so nice to know.
Yeah, it's great.
We did work with the Public Works folks on that sewer easement, because we wanted, that was, that's kind of a tough thing to work with as well, because the sewer is right there. And it goes, keeps going, getting deeper as we go, so that was also what precipitated the need for the setback.
Yeah.
Basically, a setback, Mary, this is what it is.
Yeah, ordinance amendment, okay.
So we respectfully request your approval, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone online, Liz? That wants to speak?
I don't see anyone, no.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing at 7:30, bring it back to commission. Is there any final questions on this?
It's a win-win-win.
Yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Win for the property owner, win for the trail users, it's a good, it's a good project.
Okay. All right. With that, we need to look at the motions here, so...
I'll make a motion to recommend approval to the City Council, approval of preliminary site and building plan for the building addition at 1601 Old Audubon Road, Auto Pros, and the proposed easement vacation, subject to the following nine conditions.
I'll second that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go on to the second, next one.
And then a motion to recommend approval to the City Council, a zoning ordinance amendment to PID5 as stated in the draft ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I think that's all we need for tonight on this one, right? Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Moving on to 7B. Liz, can you present?
Just give me one second.
This would be... Where are we down here? Here we go. Municipal Services Building Concept Plan.
Can you see my screen again? Yep. All right, we have a concept plan request this evening for a project being proposed by Ortel Architects and the City of Chaska, so ourselves, for our new Municipal Services Building, or what we'll refer to as MSB. The site in question is highlighted in kind of an orange-yellow on this aerial exhibit. It's located kind of in our southwestern portion of the city, towards the western city limits off of Creek Road and Chaska Creek Boulevard. So we have Highway 212 on the eastern side of the site. We have a wooded ravine and West Chaska Creek immediately south. We have rural residential properties immediately east of the property, and industrial properties immediately north, and then a singular residential lot to the northeast of the property. Again, we're towards the western limits of Chaska and then what turns into Dogren Township. We did see an application come through a couple months ago for Edco, which was also on consent this evening for a new industrial building, so that one's just kitty corner or northwest of this site. So we're at the first step in the three-step review process, so we will see this a few more times following this review and approval. To give a little bit of background and previous approvals for this site, it kind of goes back to how the city has been planning for the city with our strategic plan, which was developed in 2021 and readopted in 2025 this year, which did lay out a few visionary outcomes to look ahead to 2030. One of the outcomes or visions of the strategic plan included looking into or continuously reinvesting into city facilities. And even below that, one of the objectives was to hire and get onboard the design team for the MSB building to start out that process. This will be the second city facility project that the city will be going down. The first one was the public safety facility that was completed, or the planning process was completed in 2023 and 2024, and will soon be online, hopefully by end of year or early next year. So this is the next kind of big project that the city is pursuing within our city facilities improvements program. In May of 2022, for this site specifically, we did see a final site and building plan approved, which was known as Chaska Club West Industrial. And that was basically a large spec building, 177,000 square feet in size, 38 feet in height, that was proposed on this site. They did complete some site work following those approvals, but never sold the building or had a user identified to construct the building. So in 2024, the city was actively looking for new sites for the MSB building, and this site was an option that we were considering. So in spring of 2024, we did formally purchase the property from the property owner with the purpose to construct our new MSB building on it. Just a few items of note with our existing facility, which is located on Victoria Drive. This facility is roughly 48,000 square feet in size, has a little over 50 parking spaces there today. When we did a space needs analysis for the existing building, or for the existing operation, we identified the need for over 140,000 square feet to sustain our existing operation, but also our future growth for our Municipal Services Building. As we were looking at the existing MSB building and site, there were two major obstacles that were present, one being the wetlands on the north side, kind of limiting the buildable area, and then also the presence of an XL transmission line north of the building that needed to be relocated. We did look into that a little bit to understand cost, and it was going to be a pretty hefty cost at $3 million to be able to relocate that transmission line and free up some buildable space on that site. So it did come down to what was going to be more cost-effective was either building on that site or going somewhere new, and from a cost comparison analysis, the conclusion was to build somewhere new, and hence why the city pursued the site that we're looking at this evening. The existing building and site will remain and will still function as a cold storage facility, and also still house all of the outdoor storage and salt shed that exists there today. Some previous approvals again, March of this year, we did formally select Ortel Architects as the design team for the new MSB, and since that time, they have been working weekly with city staff to develop the plans that are in front of you this evening. We did hold a neighborhood meeting, which is required ahead of a concept plan application, which was conducted on July 23rd of this year, and did have three attendees show up that were from two different households. And then we also did display the project at River City Days in one of our city tents. We did get a few comments between those two events, and they pertain to the outside yard location or the outside storage, the Fuel Island location, questions about Creek Road and the conditions and improvements planned for that, and then just other questions pertaining to development in the area. The existing conditions of this site, so there are four lots out there today that are owned by the city, which comprise approximately 22 acres. Lot 1, Block 1, also known as 4501 Creek Road, is a 12-acre site that will be the primary site for the new MSB building. Outlet B is a little over six acres and is encumbered mostly by wooded steep slope and the ravine, and then has two existing stormwater ponds on it, and then some buildable space in between the ponds and the wooded area. And this will be the primary area for the Fuel Island. Outlet C is a little under an acre in size, will be the extension of Chaska Creek Boulevard to the south off the roundabout. And as I mentioned before, with the previous approvals that occurred on this site, some site work has already occurred, and hence why we see ponding out there, as well as some initial grading already cut into the, into the earth. The property is also zoned. It is in a planned industrial district, PID10 to be exact, and will likely remain. These are just a few existing sites into the property. One, the top image is looking southwest from Creek Road, and the bottom image is looking southeast on Creek Road. So the current request this evening is for concept plan approval for a new building, which would be the MSB building totaling 148,000 square feet and roughly 30 feet, 38 feet in height, a new Fuel Island, and a new parking lot totaling roughly 111 stalls. The building would house all of what we know as our Public Works, which includes the streets, parks, stormwater mechanics, and building maintenance departments, as well as our sewer and water department and electric department. Today, that building contains 89 employees, which is both full-time and part-time employees. And the future projections for growth within that operation would have 29 future employees added to the team. The primary operations within the new building being constructed are vehicle storage, equipment maintenance, department workshops for each kind of specific department, and office administration. And then there is no plan to have outdoor storage here at this site. The site is guided as business park in the comprehensive plan and then zone PID10 currently, and the use as proposed is, again, more in that industrial use, so it is consistent with both of those pieces. The concept plan or site plan is shown on this slide here. The colorized box here is the building itself, or the main building of the site. Again, it's 148,000 square feet. Access into the site will come from two points from Creek Road. There will be a western access that'll line up with the property to the north off of Creek Road, and then an extension of Chaska Creek Boulevard off the southern leg of the existing roundabout here, which will provide three access points. One, accessing the Fuel Island area on what we called Outlet B, and then two access points on the western side, which would provide access into the vehicle storage part of the building, and then access to the main parking lot for staff and visitors on the southeast side of the building, as well as access to a drive aisle that would bring staff back to the back portions of the property. 111 parking stalls are proposed with this site plan. In terms of meeting kind of the existing need of the facility, would certainly meet the existing need with that parking stall count. With 29 future employees added to the operation, that'll bring employee counts up to 118. So from a parking perspective and ensuring that we provide enough parking for the employee need out there, about seven more stalls will need to be defined on the plan, which the applicant or our consultant has indicated that there's space within Outlet B, and there's probably space within the backside of the site, too, that we can look at for additional parking. The main entrance of the building will come from the south side, so it is highlighted in red here, which, again, I think there was a lot of intent with the designing and programming and how to orient the building through multiple meetings with city staff and the design team in terms of how to orient the entrance here, and taking advantage of views of the site. With the wooded area being in the back here, there was some intent to try to take advantage of that view. And with the different varying operations and traffic flow on the site, it was important to try to have an easy and separated access from those components, so hence why, and there's probably a lot more that I'm not explaining, but hence why the main entrance is oriented to the south there. But for any visitors or staff that are coming to the building, would primarily enter through the south side there and park and go through the office administration area. And then, again, the Fuel Island is shown in pink here on the southeast side, and that will provide fuel for all city vehicles, so police, fire, and all Public Works vehicles as well. This is a circulation exhibit. It might be hard to see on the TV screen there, but it gives a good traffic flow pattern in how both staff and visitors would kind of enter the site. The extension of Chaska Creek Boulevard to the south would be that shared access into the site, which is shown in purple on this exhibit to show how it can access that southeastern parking lot. So again, that'll be the main access for everyone into the site. The other areas, so the northern access point on the west side would be for staff entering the vehicle storage area into the building, and then there will also be another driveway access on the south side of the site as well. And this will be secured on the south side as well as on the north side, so that'll be fully gated around, so the backside of the building and parking area will be fully secured with perimeter fencing. Trucks will be able to come both in and out on that northern access point, so if they're coming into the facility and parking, or coming out to do work in the field, they can go in and out at that point here, and then with the intention that this western access would kind of filter in, you know, city vehicles coming back from out in the field, and then repark into the facility on that western side. I think the only comment that we had in terms of circulation for the site is the parking lot on the south side of the building has two dead-end drive aisles on the western side, so providing full circulation within that parking lot is just one thing that will work to refine as we go into preliminary. The landscape plan, so again, the design team has been hard at work at really putting details together for the site. It does help when the site has gone through previous planning review to kind of understand those major concerns. to kind of understand those major concerns, which I think screening is one of the big ones. The former screening plan or landscape plan is shown in the upper right corner of this page. And then the proposed landscape plan is shown as the larger exhibit. And I think the goal from the beginning has been to try to mimic that screening plan that came through in twenty-twenty-two, so that there's not fundamentally much change there from what's being seen primarily from the residential on the southwest side of the site. So we'll continue to work on that as a team going into the next step. They also provided some renderings of sightlines from the neighboring residential to the southwest to show how the screening would be viewed and how the building would be viewed from those neighboring residences. And then an aerial view too to show kind of that screening layering happening. This is a bird's eye view looking northeast, so from those rural residential properties. And you can start to get a feel of what the building would look like as well. The first exhibit on the top here is a programming exhibit in terms of how the building is laid out today and the varying functions within it. So again, the design team has been hard at work with city staff primarily of the existing MSB building to understand how they want the programming to work in the building and how it connects to kind of the varying functions of the building as well. So the office admin area, which will hold kind of all of the offices and cubes and kind of workspaces, will be on that southeast side, and that's where, where that main entrance and lobby space will be too. So if visitors are coming, they'll be coming into this space here in red. Each department will have their own workshop space, which is essentially kind of their own meeting area and locker space to discuss how they're gonna go about their day for each day or each week. And then the mechanics bay, which will be where the mechanics work on all vehicles or all equipment of the city, will be this brown, larger brown area on the southwest portion of the building. And this will be kind of that taller component of the building as well, because it'll have, oops. That clearance space needed to lift trucks within that, that space. And then wash bays that'll flank the kind of western half of that, so where cars can pull in and get washed down before they go back into vehicle storage. The main entrance and office portion of the building is also shown in the rendering on the bottom here. And I think one nice added feature is there will be an outdoor terrace space on the second level that the employees will be able to use during the warmer months and have those really nice views of the wooded area to the south. And then another aerial view looking southwest, showing kind of the front side of the building that'll face out towards Creek Road and Chaska Creek Boulevard. In terms of the building materials, there's a plan to use a mix of brick, precast panels, windows, and metal cladding. And they've shown a few concepts of how to apply those materials on the building. Again, those are getting further refined, but the goal is to try to mimic some of the colors and palettes that you see in other civic buildings in town here. And I think natural light is a huge part of the design here too, so that's why you'll see kind of those more elevated openings into the building, which will provide that great natural light into the vehicle storage space, the mechanics bay, and the office areas too. So just a few things to work on as we approach preliminary. Just a minor revision within the parking lot to ensure full circulation is achieved there. Continuing to work on the screening plan, understanding details for solar array. Didn't touch on that too much, but we are more than likely going to be incorporating solar arrays on the site. And then making sure that the parking plan meets future or existing and future needs for the property, including some visitor parking too. And then providing a truck turning, turning exhibit in preliminary to kind of understand the, the turning needs for the site. So with that, we're asking you to make a motion to recommend approval of the concept plan for the new MSB building, and then based on the conditions that are listed in the staff report. If this moves forward this evening, it would go to council on Monday, September fifteen. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we do have Andrew here with Ortel if there's any design questions that we have. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz. So bring it back to commission. This is not a public hearing, however, we do have people here. So if someone would like to address the commission in a minute, you can certainly come up so, come up and do so. First, just questions amongst ourselves, and I'll start with the city for staff here. I saw a lot of sightlines from the, for the residents on the southwest, kind of looking northeast, you know, all the different. Now, there is one residential property on the northeast side of the, of the development. It looks as if they're already kind of surrounded by trees, and we're gonna have the pond in between that and the building, but just wanna make sure that's being accommodated too. It wasn't really shown in the, the agenda or the packet.
Yeah, and we don't have a sightline exhibit of that property right now, but that's certainly something we can get for preliminary.
Yeah, I mean, I imagine it's, it looks just sort of aerial today, and the distance between the building and the ponds and the existing trees, that it should be fine. Just wanted to point out, I didn't see anything from that. Hours of the mechanics, is it gonna be standard business hours? Because you do have the neighbors and potentially air compressed drills and things going on. Maybe it's, you can hear it, maybe not.
I can speak to that.
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so their hours are standard business hours by and large. There are, you know, emergency situations where they may need to be called in because of critical vehicle, you know, needs attention or whatever.
Sure.
That's unusual. A lot of their equipment is battery operated now. There are some that are air driven, but that, that battery operation reduces the noise. We were out there kind of learning from the mechanics a few weeks ago and asked them to, you know, use their equipment and their drills and things. And we stood just outside of the bay, even there, it wasn't.
Hard to hear, yeah.
Period, no doubt, but.
Yeah, but if you're hundreds, a couple hundred yards away, it's probably, okay. Solar array, obviously I saw on the packet, you're in flux if you're gonna get that or not, and if you do, where it goes. But just if that does come to fruition, then certainly be cognizant of reflections, you know, on the solar array for the neighbors.
Hi, I'm Andrew with Ortel Architects. We had another meeting today, so I can update you on a couple things, specifically with the solar array as well. The solar array on forty-five oh one is going to be building mounted. It's gonna be up on the roof. There's no space on grade to do a, a grade mounted. There is an opportunity that the city is investigating for grant application to put a potential for canopy mounted solar on, on the fuel island canopy as an option. That's dependent on the grant being awarded.
And then are the solar panels, are they more of a darker glass, so they're not gonna reflect? So the neighbors aren't gonna have like mirrors basically out in the field that they're gonna see?
Yeah, there, there is a reflection issue with solar panels, obviously. With these roof mounted, and the way the building is designed currently with the, the pop-ups have a, an angled slope, they will be flat mounted to that, so they won't have an additional angle of rise. And so there's still some details being worked out there to what the actual angle is and how that works, but there will be no direct reflection of any sunlight into the neighboring property from the angle of what those panels will be oriented on the building.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Those were my three things top of, top of mind.
Couple, one, go ahead. Couple of questions. Is, is there room for expansion on this building at some point?
There is, there is not. This is built out to a full twenty-year projected build-out for vehicles and staff. And with the original MSB remaining in operation, that's gonna house rotational equipment. Some seasonal work will happen over there, probably midday, but every, all staff will start at this facility, at the new facility, and then disperse out. And if they have to go to work at the existing facility, they will. There's no, there's no need to plan for additional vehicle storage. That's all accommodated for within the city's growth plan.
Just curious, what, what year was the original building built?
Pardon?
The current building. What year was that built? Any idea?
It's early.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five.
Okay, all right. We did good then.
That's pretty good.
One additional note on the, on the maintenance area. One thing we discussed today is those doors, those overhead doors that are facing south, they will be shut all day long. There'll only be an operation of vehicles coming in and out. There will be no leaving the doors open during the course of the summertime, even when it's nice out to get fresh air in. We're mechanically addressing that so that as a notion to the neighbors that we're trying to contain all operations within the building. And so the vehicle circulation is planned that way as well, that, there's a lot of pavement out on it, on that west end, but it's simply to accommodate a vehicle from being able to make a turn and come straight into a door without having to do a three-point turn and hear a backup horn. So all of that circulation has been planned to go from west to east. So all, as vehicles vacate the, the building to go out and do their daily work, they're all exiting on the east side of the building towards the roundabout.
Yeah, exactly. Got it. Very cool.
I can speak to some of the future also, you know, thinking ahead, future growth or usage has to be. My quickly growing community happened for some time, but actually, the, the end is near, right? As far as our expansion, and so we can first, we can foresee with what we understand the remaining, which has to be, you know, what sort of equipment is necessary to, you know, plow and maintain the streets and all the, you know, the infrastructure that comes along with that, along with those staff. And so, you know, that, that point of development, coming to a close is, I think, understood well enough based on what we have remaining within the community to have pretty good confidence that, of what it's gonna take to, you know, have our crews be able to maintain that.
Any further questions?
How do they, this is just a question. How do they manage today with forty-some thousand square feet? If they need a hun, right, so that's, how does that work?
It doesn't work well.
It's very squishy.
Yeah, there's a lot of outdoor storage, to the extent that we can get the vehicles into what exists today. If you can imagine combining the game of Tetris with power trucks, that's what they, then there's a twist of ballet maybe in there as well. That's what it takes to get the vehicles in there. It's not efficient, it's not effective. That's what we have, so.
I, I saw it.
There's a, there's a lot of kudos to offer in the fact that the crews have made it work as well as they have at this point.
I saw it firsthand at the open house they did about two years ago.
It'd go to the open house, yeah. It was so packed. There are like so many vehicles outside, and they were saying about like, some of them stored all the time outside, even in the snow and all like that. It's causing more, I mean, more service requests and all other things, so probably this will solve all those things.
Thirty-thousand-dollar vehicles either.
Yeah.
To get them inside, yeah.
Leaving it outside. There is no.
The facility's gonna be fully HVAC then, I imagine, or temperature controlled?
Yes, yep. The, the vehicle storage box is heat only. The rest of the facility will be heated and cooled for occupant use daily.
Any geothermal discussion on that?
Uh, no, there was not.
Fuel island, obviously engineered to contain everything, any kind of spillage and stuff like that?
Yeah, so the, the fuel island, all the fuel will be contained in double-walled tanks, underground, leak monitored and censored. Any rainwater that falls within the island has to go to a pre-treatment catchment area before it goes into additional ponds.
Sure.
A lot of that detail is being worked on, on that, that C, which lot is?
Outlet B.
Outlet B. Confused all the time. Along with the city's plans for redevelopment of the road. So those two ponds are currently planned for taking some street stormwater. And as the street gets redeveloped, those ponds are gonna have to enlarge and along with what we need to do with the pavement and the fuel island. So that is continually being worked on right now with city engineering and then our civil engineering site staff as well.
Okay, and then one thing I, we glossed over, maybe I missed it. The lighting, it's gonna be the kind of standard downward lighting, directional lighting, so we're not gonna?
We'll have perimeter poles around the south and west ends of the site strictly for safety purposes. The rest of the site lighting will be from, from the building on wall packs mounted just above the doors where we need it for egress, code-required egress and safety concerns. But there'll be zero cutoff. We're not lighting the entirety of every last inch of pavement. We do have a photometric ready to go for the preliminary plan, because we're still, we're advancing the design very quickly.
Sure.
We're not, the goal is to not light every square inch of that paved area, because that would be an exceptional amount of site lighting to be able to do.
Yeah, I mean, it's more of like a comment, like you have the provision for the solar panels and all, that's a welcoming thing, yeah. Definitely, we need to have that in future, and most of the equipment you were saying about the battery operated, that even saves a lot of energy. So that's a good, good design to include that.
I mean, you know, for a concept plan, it's obviously pretty thorough.
Right.
So I appreciate, that's, that's great. It's appreciated. I don't have any further questions for the architect. Do you, could I do a couple other people in the, in the room here if they wanna, anyone have any further questions?
When do you hope to break ground?
The documents will be released for bidding in February, and will break ground in mid to late spring of twenty-six. It should be, so we're doing twelve, sixteen-month total construction process, but the bulk of the building work will be done in probably eight to nine months before it's enclosed, and then it's just interior work after that.
Yeah. Thank you. One quick question, sorry. You just mentioned that on the bulk of it, interior, is there a way, you know, is there gonna be, because the, like, the parking area of the warehouse, tilt-up panels, heat only, is there gonna be a way, a way that some of those vehicles are able to park in there while the rest of the building is being built out? Or is that like a certificate occupancy issue?
No, they'll, they'll have to remain at the existing MSB until it's fully completed and certified.
Just wondering if there's gonna be a CO in phases or something?
No, it's, it's all a single-phase construction, start, finish, done.
Okay, all right. Couple of gentlemen in the crowd, if anyone has any questions, like to address commission, concerns, comments, wanna yell at us or something? Okay, I mean, it happens. Free car washes for the neighbors? Incentives?
I don't know what was discussed.
Free washes for commission members? Well, all right. Any further questions? Is there anybody online that has a question?
There's no one online.
One last, I mean, you are mentioning about the road improvements and all those things, some of the neighborhood meeting like, so are you planning to have any update to them? And I mean, I think we had the same, when Edco project came in, some people came in and said that road was very bad and all those things, right? We were talking about MSB building.
Yeah, Creek Road.
So along with that, yeah.
I think they would wanna really fix it until all this is done.
Yeah, Creek, Creek Road, so Edco has now, you know, petitioned as part of their process for engineering to really dive into design of Creek Road. And that's gonna accommodate the utilities that Edco needs, the street improvements, I think, along with that. So we are working towards that as well at this time. Yeah, so I think we'd expect. Yep, so I think we'd expect, but we'll see how that phasing needs to play out relative to Edco's build process, MSB build process, and everything else that's going out there. But that will be, you know, part of what's occurring there.
Okay. Okay.
Ready for the motion?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think it's a very complete and well-thought-out concept plan like it would be at the city, because it's a city project, so I assume that they're, you know, it looks very, it's like a very nice building and it's needed for the city. I don't, as a concept, I don't see any issues at this point. Is there anyone that'd like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to recommend the approval to the city council of the concept plan for the municipal services building, MSB, subject to the following eight conditions.
I'll second that. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we just have two other business, which is just the council meeting moments, I'll hereby receive those. And before we wrap up, is there any final questions, comments for staff? Anything you want to talk about, city-related?
Who did the mowing on forty-one? I like, getting rid of all the scraggly brush.
They've been busy.
That scraggly brush was actually landscaping that was installed as part of the forty-one improvement project that happened between Undermark and Iger Trail around twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So yeah, there'll be further discussion. We reached out.
Yeah. Okay.
Really some effort before, but.
Couple more weeks on the roundabout, forty-one-ten?
Uh, yeah, so that.
I saw a new update, it lists a lot of concrete is in.
October.
What was that?
End of October.
End of October?
Did I say that right? Yeah, I think so.
It was really supposed to be the end of September, wasn't it?
It was gonna be Labor Day originally.
And I heard it was, I think it's two weeks.
Then I heard two, three weeks.
I may have misspoke.
Well, the original, the last update was end of September, but then in your mind, you just assume it's October. That's pretty much where I'm at.
Just go with December first. Then it's a, then it's a win.
Next spring.
Any update on Supermercado?
Well, the folks who want to operate that and, you know, build that out on it, so they purchased it, I don't think they really began too much on their interior improvements they're getting.
No.
But I do know that they're active in a project in Richfield right now, there's a Rainbow Foods in Richfield that the same group is renovating, giving us very similar concepts there.
That's a much larger footprint.
And so my sense is that they're focused on that project before they're gonna dive in at the Chaska project. They own it, I think they're intending to move forward. It's just kind of.
And nothing you are KFC.
Drive-throughs open.
Starting to become an eyesore.
It is an eyesore.
Starting.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, it's gotten to the point where I don't know what to do there.
It'll become the fire runs practice.
That'd be a good one.
All right, with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.